Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's December 14th Town Council meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, as a preliminary matter, this is Keith LePointe, the President of North Attleboro Town Council. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. I'll start with the Town Council first. Mr. Shanahan. Great, thanks, Mr. Shanahan. There is still a weird delay with your audio, but I picked it up. Ms. Prescott.
Yes, I'm here.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Prescott. Ms. Boyce?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Boyce. Mr. Gregory?
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. Gregory, thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Cathcart? Thank you, Ms. Cathcart. Mr. Lennox?
President.
Mr. Lennox, Mr. Parry?
President.
All right, we've got Mr. Parry, President. And again, this is Keith LePointe, so we have all members of council accounted for. Members of the town staff, Mr. Borg?
President.
Thank you, Mr. Borg. Mr. Gallagher? Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Ms. Billinkoff? Are you there, Ms. Billinkoff?
My mic's on.
Yeah. All right, we'll come back with a little bit of an audio issue on Ms. Billinkoff. Mr. Sweet?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Sweet. Mr. Hollowell? I'm not hearing anything from Mr. Hollowell, although I do see a connected line. Mr. Ward?
Here.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ward. Let me go back to Ms. Billinkoff one more time. We still have an audio issue there, and Mr. Hollowell, I know he's not speaking right now, so he could have stepped away for a moment. Mr. Hollowell, are you there?
Don't forget Linda.
I don't see Linda. Which line is Linda? Ms. Katanzaridi?
I'm here.
All right, is that... Oh, I see it now, Linda. There it is. Got it? Thank you, Ms. Katanzaridi. And then there's two lines. One is a resident line and one is a caller line. Ms. Billinkoff? All right, well, we'll have to come back to that. Mr. Hollowell, one last time? Okay, likely could have stepped away. All right, let's keep moving. I think that's everybody anticipated from the town side. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and it looks like possibly two resident lines we'll come back to later. All right, so, good evening. This is an open meeting of the North Attleboro Town Council. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This meeting will include public comment. We'll get to that in a minute. For this meeting of the Town Council, we're using GoToMeeting, and the information for joining is on the town's website with the agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please beware that other folks may see you, and take care not to screen cut. Take care that your screen will be shared. Anything that you broadcast could be recorded. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda, must I note otherwise. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will recognize each speaker. After you conclude your comments, I will look for other speakers from the council who wish to speak by raising your hand, and I'll call on you. Please do hold your name, though, until you're called, until I yield the floor to you. Please remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking, and please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And for any response, please wait till I yield the floor to you. Okay, for the public comment section, I will ask members of the public if they wish to address the council. I will take an inventory of anybody who wishes to speak, and then I'll yield the floor, one at a time, to each of the residents who wishes to address the council. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And with that, we can turn to the agenda. One second here. Okay, so we covered the roll call and the pledge of allegiance. We're not going to move to approval of minutes. As a little bit of confusion, just for the sake of the public, if you notice any confusion in tonight's meeting, we actually, the town, went through an email upgrade at the end of last week. And as a result, some counselors, including myself, had a little bit of trouble getting connected over the weekend and through today. So there was a little bit of miscommunication on a couple of points. So apologies in advance to the council from me and to the public for any confusion that might creep into the meeting tonight. One resulting aspect of that is the December 8 meeting minutes were, in fact, shared on Friday morning with the council, but as part of the upgrade, I think they were lost from our accounts. So if you look right now, I don't think you'll find them. Mr. Borg will make sure that we all get that copy. We'll just take care of it in our next meeting. But I would like to approve the council meetings as amended for November 23rd. Mr. Parry?
Move to approve the Town Council minutes of November 23, 2020, as amended.
Second.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Parry, a second from Ms. Cathcart. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan?
Shoot, I was... Keith?
Yeah?
I would just like to see if we could attach the measures to our minutes? The measures that we voted on.
Okay, so you want to attach those documents to the minutes?
Yeah, just the measures, only the measure. You know, the measure itself.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher, you look like you're trying to chime in on the topic.
Yeah, Mr. President, as a matter of course, every document that you review at any of your meetings become part of the record of the minutes, so they get attached automatically to the minutes and are kept as such. That's by law.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. We have to list all of the documents that were reviewed. So it is part of it.
Well, I'm aware of that. I have done the minutes for so many years. So I know, like for our team, and we have them attached. It's just that recently I haven't seen that. You know, so that was why I brought that up. So if we have them attached, then I'm okay with that. I'm fine.
Well, I'm just checking here.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, but then I wouldn't be able, you know, I might not be looking in the right place either.
Yeah, let's just...
But if that's the case, then I know, and...
Yeah, let's... So I'm just looking at the minutes myself. So let's just, actually, this is going to go to Ms. Billinkoff, I think, as the council clerk. Let's just make sure in our minutes that we actually do have the referenced documents noted in the minutes. The most current version doesn't have that, but as Mr. Gallagher points out, that is law. So I think they're technically speaking, they're referenced within the conversations, but I know in the past, we would have them at the top of the minutes. So I think that's an easy pivot for the future. And Ms. Billinkoff, if you have any questions, we can talk afterwards and just make sure we're on the same page.
I only bring that up, Keith, is because, I mean, we have the measure written in there, but when people are reading it, it doesn't say what the measure actually is, so that's why.
Okay, we'll make sure we note the documents in the...
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All right, we'll come back again. Mr. Shanahan, try to get some audio from you.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, got it. Abstention from Mr. Shanahan. Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Ms. Prescott votes yes. Ms. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Boyce votes yes. Gregory?
Yes.
Gregory votes yes. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons votes yes. Ms. Cathcart?
I will, yes.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox votes yes. Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mr. Parry votes yes. I, Keith LePointe, vote yes. That's eight, zero, with one abstention. So again, we'll move the December 8 minutes to our next meeting. Now we move to Town Counselor and Community Announcement. So I want to revisit something that I finished our meeting last time with, but a very warm welcome to Mr. Shanahan. Glad to have you here, and the floor is yours.
I don't have much to say. I'm just looking forward to the opportunity to serve the town, and I hope I can add value to the council as well as to the town, and I look forward to working with all of you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shanahan. Ms. Prescott?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Prescott. Ms. Boyce?
I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Boyce. Mr. Gregory?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Simmons?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Ms. Cathcart?
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cathcart. Mr. Lennox?
Thank you. I just want to welcome Mr. Shanahan to Town Council. Plenty of work to do, and I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays. Thank you.
Mr. Lennox. Mr. Parry?
Going to totally copy, Mr. Lennox. Shannon, welcome aboard. Good to have you here. And of course, happy holidays to everybody on the council as well as at home.
Thank you, Mr. Parry, and I will just echo the sentiment. I hope everybody has a great holiday season, and above all, I think we're all super excited for a new year, so if we don't meet again, we'll talk about that later in the agenda. But if we don't meet again this calendar year, happy new year. I think we're ready for 2021. All right, let's move on. We're now at Resident and Community Comment. Is there anybody from the community that would like to address the council? Again, I'll just have you state your name, and then I'll come back to you to yield the floor. Anyone? Last call?
If that green handset is lit green, Keith, doesn't that mean they're on?
It means that they have audio, yeah. It means that they have audio, but they don't necessarily have to say anything.
Oh, oh, I thought maybe that they were unable to respond.
No, no, I assume everybody has the control over their mute.
Okay, so they can... This is their way of attending. I got you. I thought people wanted to say something, and I couldn't figure out why they weren't answering you.
Oh, yeah, no, I think there's people who just are joining to participate. So, okay, well, last call? All right, we'll move on then. We're going to go to Subcommittee and Other Reports. Finance, Mr. Parry?
Mr. LePointe, did I miss it earlier? Are we doing the Town Manager Report later? Sorry if I missed that.
Oh, no, I skipped it. Funny. Thank you, Mr. Parry. Appreciate that. Yeah, I don't know why. I was looking right out of here. Mr. Borg, suppose you probably have something to say today?
House President, thank you. Council members, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update to you this evening. Let me start off first with COVID. In my Town Manager Report that you received, you can see that our numbers are up. We have 65 active cases of COVID in town right now. Hats off, again, to Anne Marie Fleming and our Health Agent, Department of Health, our Board of Health, for all that they're doing. But we've got a lot of cases in town, a lot of contact tracing going on. We are in a red status. And I would just like to, again, reinforce the message. As we saw that the governor rolled back the COVID-19 response to the Phase 3 Step 1, we have closed Town Hall. Well, let me restate that. We have changed Town Hall hours to appointment-only. We're still providing all the services, working remotely as much as possible right now to try and stem the tide of this COVID outbreak that's going on as it flares up here near the holidays. But we are by appointment-only in Town Hall. As a result, we're encouraging and looking at as many folks on our team that can work remotely and provide that, but we're still providing all the service throughout town that we normally would do. But there's some interesting caveats to this particular rollback. The governor did require masks to be worn in office spaces where there are open space, and if there's more than one person, they do have to wear masks full-time, and we are adhering to that here at Town Hall as well. It does make it a little bit tough, but we're going to power through it, make sure that we protect our employees and the public that come in here. So again, if you need to do business and you can't do it online, we encourage you to do all your business online with town that you can or telephonically. If you need to come in, please set up an appointment with the appropriate department that you need to come into. Next opportunity to say welcome to Karen Billinkoff as the new Executive Assistant to the Town Manager and Clerk of the Council. She is replacing Rajan. Her first day was today. She's on tonight. Just wanted to extend a thank you and help us get through all of this confusion that we have with minutes and the email upgrades and everything else. I also want to just provide a quick update. I did receive a letter of resignation, and I have accepted from Sheila Scududo, the Town Assessor. She, her last day will be the 1st of January. We wish her the very best in her new adventures as going forward, and we'll be looking to work with the council on appointing or selecting a new assessor in the future. And that'll come up again later in my briefing tonight. Also, our new Town Planner, Jennifer Carlin, today was her first day today. Had the opportunity to sit down with her for a little bit and go over things. I know the Planning Board Chair met with her as well. So just welcome to her and all those new members of our team. As we alluded to earlier, we did upgrade to Office 365 as a part of our systems and information systems here in town, and we're going through a little bit of email turmoil, but we're going to work through it. I know our IT Director, Keith Mueller, is constantly working on this, and if you're having problems, I will have him reach out to you directly. I know he's tried to contact several of you today to work through some of your problems that we have concerning connectivity with email. All right, last note for operations. There is a winter storm watch in effect. I do expect that this will probably change to a winter storm warning over the next 24 hours or so. We are expecting 12-plus inches of snowfall Wednesday night going into Thursday. I sent you a National Weather Service update with your packet earlier tonight. If you didn't get it, I'll make sure you get an additional one here. But right now, we're tracking accumulation in the neighborhood of 12-plus inches, and I know Mark's on the line here tonight. He and I have been in communication or talking through this, making sure we're well-prepared for this. Last item from my update this evening. Governor Baker did sign the budget over the weekend, so we do have an approved budget. The numbers that were in the Conference Committee numbers has not hit the Commonwealth's website, so I can't have the exact numbers and confirmation of what the governor signed, but as soon as that's available, I'll pass that on along. So that's good news as we begin to move forward. Subject to your question, that concludes my Town Manager update for this evening.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Borg. Any questions? I don't see any. Ms. Cathcart?
Hi. I'm sorry, I don't have a question. I just, since we have a minute to say something. If Mr. Borg would please send the Town Manager Report and whatever else you might have sent in the last few days before the upgrade, because I did get your transmission tonight at 6 o'clock, but I don't have anything before that. So I think we... I need to have that. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll make sure we send that out.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Borg. Other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on then. I will just briefly hit on Community Comment again, just to get back on the agenda flow. Is there anybody from the community that wants to address the council? Okay, let's go to Subcommittee and Other Reports. Finance, Mr. Parry?
I have nothing to report. I'm assuming we'll just give our, you know, updated recommendation on the measure at that point in time in the agenda, otherwise we're good here.
But we can hold that for all business. Thank you. Bylaw, Ms. Cathcart?
Yes, we did hold a meeting last Wednesday. Unfortunately, there was some miscommunication, so we did not end up with a quorum, but our new member was in attendance, so we managed to have a discussion on the agenda, which is basically that everything was going to get tabled and moved to this Wednesday night. So that would be the only report I have at the time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cathcart. Rules, Mr. Lennox?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are currently still in the draft process of the current section. I expect that we'll probably go for the next meeting or two, and then we will present something to the council coming up.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Lennox. All right, School Committee. I do actually have a few updates I wanted to share with you. So there's been quite a bit of discussion from a budget perspective within the School Committee. So just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what they've been doing for the last six weeks or so. So they met last week, last Monday, I believe it was, and meeting prior to that, their November monthly meeting, they had raised for the first time indications that they might have a budget gap that they're operating on. And, Mr. Borg, I would just invite you to chime in here if I'm off or you have anything to add. But they raised at that November meeting that there may be a budget gap. I believe what they said was $1.8 million. You might have read that in the paper a few weeks ago. So there's been, quite frankly, you know, six weeks of awesome communication between Mr. Borg and the Superintendent on the topic, and they had an opportunity to look at several of the school's cost centers and revolving accounts, talk about different opportunities to try to close the budget, talk about some of the actions that had been taken relative to fees and other funding mechanisms. And through that discussion, I think there was a reason for optimism that the school might be able to close their budget deficit themselves. So that was communicated at last week's School Committee meeting. The Finance Manager told the School Committee and the public that they were exploring opportunities. They had to close that gap. Mr. Borg and I both sort of reiterated back that if after that exercise, there's still a gap in funding necessary to deliver the services that they had committed to for this year, the processes is pretty robust, right? Mr. Borg is the owner of the budget. The Superintendent, with the authorization of School Committee, would submit a request to him, and then he would bring it to us, the council, to approve any reallocation of funds from different sources, be that free cash or whatever. And Mr. Borg and I both indicated that we would be supportive of doing what was necessary to make sure the schools were funded to the service levels that they've committed. There was that discussion. There were some questions about the state budget. It's probably just worth me just spending a minute, because I think one of the challenges with this is that the vast majority of people in town probably don't really follow how the budget is built up. I did cover it in the School Committee meeting in my comments last week, but even for us, and again, Mr. Borg, you know, please chime in if I missed something. But when you think about the budget process, there's two sides of it, right? There's the revenue side of it, the funding source side of it, and there's the spending, the expense side of it. On the revenue side, you know, unlike a business, we don't have a whole bunch of revenue sources. We have tax dollars, which are fixed and defined, property tax dollars that are fixed and defined by Chapter 11, that's the tax levy. Then there's local receipts and some other variable, more variable taxes, you know, excise tax and things like that that come in on the tax side. So you have your tax piece, and then you have your state aid piece, which comes in primarily through Chapter 70, but there's others and trade-offs that happen, because we also get support from the state for, you know, different things that are provided to us. That ultimately becomes the cherry sheet that everybody talks about. That's the balance of the state aid we get, and the fees that were, call them fees, probably not the right word, but fees that are assessed by the state that we pay in, that net balance is the cherry sheet. That ultimately, altogether, creates our other source of funding. So you have tax dollars, and you have state aid. That's where the revenue is. On the expense side, the process can vary year to year. Mr. Borg is taking a zero-based budget approach this year. You could take a rollover budget approach. There's all kinds of ways that you can build up your expense base, but ultimately, it's all the same. It's the departments talking about what services they want to deliver to the community, and how do you fund those? And that sort of becomes the expenses that you need to be able to operate. Every department's the same, right? They work with the Town Manager to structure their spending requests, and then those two sides come together to be the budget, right? And then we go through that painful process of trade-offs, of what can we afford, where can we cut? And that ultimately becomes the final defined budget. There's a period of uncertainty, right? Because we're building the budget with estimates on our revenue, mostly in our state aid, but there's also estimates in our taxes, too. But on the state aid side, that can vary, right? And we've seen it. We've seen a downward trend over the last decade. But we estimate it, and then that kind of gets reconciled in the final budget. This year's particularly unique, obviously, for 1,000 reasons, but a big one for us as a Town Council is that that state budget wasn't approved until last week, when normally we would see that before the end of the fiscal year or at the latest in the early summer months, and it was approved last week. So there was a question, right? Because there was a lot of sort of public reporting of the fact that the Chapter 70 money was a couple million dollars more than we had assumed it to be. And so the question was asked by the School Committee, well, we get that money, right? We get another $2 million to spend, how, you know, the School Committee sees fit. So, you know, we had a kind of an extended discussion about that, and the fact that that's not the way the budget's built, right? You make a spending need definition. Just remind people to mute your lines if you could. So you have those two things come together, and that's your budget, and we all approved last week to move money into stabilization as the kind of most cautious way to move forward with that surplus. So we talked about that a little bit, and, you know, some of the things that we were thinking about for the future. There was a presentation of the capital requests from the School Department, so we went through their top 10, included a lot of projects that we all have talked about, the track, the bleachers. Work probably not new, but was maybe new to me, and my paying attention was just a lot of work that they want to do around HVAC. Not directly related to COVID, but you could tell that that was definitely motivating, is kind of upgrading air handling and cooling and heating systems. Most of those are decades old, so there was a pretty robust discussion about that being their top priority. HVAC upgrades, and then the second group of priorities was the athletic facility upgrades, bleachers, track, bathrooms and concession stand, and then there were a handful of others kind of listed after that. So we talked about that for a while. And those are the highlights. I thought it was a pretty robust conversation. Again, super impressed with how Mr. Borg and Mr. Holcomb continue to collaborate. Just conversations that led from kind of a one-point, a discussion of a $1.8 million deficit to further discussions of, okay, well, maybe there are ways that we can narrow this gap down with funds that we already have. So I thought that was super productive, and I was impressed with both of those gentlemen in those conversations. Mr. Borg, is there anything I'm forgetting to cover?
Council President, through you. No, but just to kind of reinforce some of the points that you've made and just echo the comments and my observations as well from the meeting. But, you know, I stand by the relationship I have with the Superintendent and the open lines of communication that exist. Uh, but, you know, I stand by, uh, the relationship I have with the superintendent and the, the open lines of communication that exist. Uh, he and I, uh, talk frequently, uh, in the week. Um, and, uh, from the town, uh, side, we're committed to supporting the schools and working with them through any part of, uh, the issue. Uh, but to date, as you had mentioned, I have not received a request from the school department, uh, for any budget modification. So now we are in talks, and then I think, um, the, the schools are, are looking ahead down, you know, as they should, and looking at all the potential opportunities uh, and impacts on current operations and where they see their budget. It, but to date have not received any requests for any, uh, change in their budget. Um, I, I just also like to rea-, you know, reiterate, we are committed to, you know, providing the schools with every dollar of chapter 70 money that they're entitled to. Uh, just as you point out, just in the fact that if that funding had been shorted, right? If we received, uh, 16 million dollars instead of 18 million dollars, we'd be working very hard to make sure that they received every dollar of that, of their budget. So the difference is, as you, uh, had explained, on the reverse side on expenses, their budget, uh, has not changed. But they will get every dollar of the, uh, um, chapter 70 money. So I, I, I think, uh, you know, the superintendent and I talked today, we're working collaboratively to make sure that there are, uh, no issues in our schools are successful.
All right, thanks, Mr. Borg. Couple other things I just want to call out, uh, not budget related, but, uh, it's an update from the schools. Um, two things in particular that I think would be just interesting to the council. Uh, one was there was a extended discussion, uh, about returning, uh, students K through two, uh, back into full-time learning. Uh, the state had asked and sort of put some pressure on to do that. Um, but to return all kids back to full-time learning, it would require smaller than the six feet that they're operating with right now in the hybrid format. So, uh, the school department did a survey of parents of K through two students and said, if your student could come back four days a week, but they might be within three feet of another student, would you be comfortable with that? And unfortunately, they had enough people said they wouldn't be comfortable with it, that it would throw the entire staffing model on its head because you then need to allow those students to be full-time remote. And the way they're handling full-time remote for the younger kids is with dedicated remote teachers. Unlike the older kids who are basically kind of in and out with this kind of teacher. The younger kids are getting dedicated support. So it threw the, through the whole staffing model upside down. Again, that's K through two. Um, so anyways, because of the need to have additional, uh, remote students more than the thresholds they were at, it just didn't work. So, uh, the school committee made a decision to stay with the hybrid approach for everybody. Um, and then just the last update I'll share, um, it's a really sad story, but I just am so impressed with the leadership of some of the students. So you might not know, but the school committee actually has student representatives from the high school who, uh, I don't know if they're ex officio members or, or whatever, but they're representatives of the, of the student body to the school committee. Um, and typically they, they talk about all the different things they're doing. Uh, well, this past meeting, um, uh, they all came together and basically used their time to talk about, uh, the, the really sad situation where the freshman member of their school took his own life. And they talked about that. They talked about everything they've been doing as a student community to try to, um, really make sure that they're taking care of each other, uh, programs they're bringing in to focus on mental health. Uh, this is all student-led. The kids are, the kids are doing this themselves. And I, I can't tell you how impressed I was with both their poise as they were explaining to the school committee the work they were doing, but then the initiative that, you know, these young student leaders are taking to really control their own environment. Uh, it's always so impressive, but in the current circumstances, uh, really, quite frankly, blew me away. So I, I wanted to share that with you as a positive outcome. Uh, that's everything from the schools. I'll pause for questions. I don't think there's anything else here. Yeah, I'll pause for questions. All right, we can move on. Sorry, pivoted away from my agenda. Economic growth and sustainability, Mr. Gregory.
Uh, thank you. So I don't really have an update for you, um, but I do have, uh, just, I just want to follow up on our last town council meeting. There was, um, just a request to have that presentation that would be, um, the director of public works, Mark Halliwell, and company of town manager, uh, Michael Bog was going to put together a presentation and present specifically for our, uh, for the subcommittee that I'm chairing, but I kind of wanted to push that so it would happen in front of everybody. I just wanted to follow up on that and see if that's still working behind the scenes. I know there's a lot of competing priorities, but I don't want to, you know, we're kind of waiting for that so we can get the directive, um, as to what priorities we want to focus on as a committee. Um, and I really wanted that brainstorming, storming exercise to happen in front of the whole town council, so.
Yep, yep. Uh, thank you, Mr. Gregory. I, I'll let Mr. Borg chime in, but, uh, request was heard, um, and positively received, so we'll definitely get it on the agenda. Um, I did, with some of the other things, I didn't want to do it tonight and, and just the notice. But I think in January, we should be able to pull something together. Um, Mr. Borg, does that sound reasonable to you?
Absolutely, and we're prepared to do that. We're working to make sure that's a, a go.
Great. Good. So we'll get that and totally agree. I think it'd be really great for the council to have a discussion around the, uh, development direction that we want, want to take and, and ways we can be involved and get an update from the key departments on, uh, on what they're working on. Very good. All right. So that's, uh, subcommittee and other reports. We'll move on to old business. Uh, this is measure 2020 dash 022. Uh, this is the time and attendance system. Uh, Mr. Pari, I'll, I'll let you go first with the recommendation of finance, and then, uh, Mr. Borg, I'll give you a chance to comment.
Thank you, Mr. LePointe. Yep, measure 2021, 22, funding request for, from free cash for a town-wide time and attendance system. Um, the finance committee, uh, voted six to zero to recommend favorable action to the council on this measure. Uh, town manager Borg is requesting $28,000 from free cash. Uh, this is a, a new payroll system. Um, the current system is Excel-based, paper-based, um, rather antiquated and fragmented. Um, what they're, uh, going to do with this new software, uh, would appear to be a lot more reliable, trackable, more accurate, uh, more real-time. It can enable more, uh, efficient operations from the departments. Um, the annual cost of this, while they're asking for 28K, um, the annual cost of this is approximately around $48,000 per year. Uh, Mr. Cameron, one of the members of our, of our finance committee, um, is professional in this space. Uh, by his estimation, it's a, it's a very good price, um, that, that they, the, the town is receiving. Keith, can you hear me okay? I just lost like all my pictures. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I can hear you. Um, but your, your video is popping out.
Um, so, overall, the finance committee thought it was a great idea. Uh, Mr. Borg will probably talk about it. This was the third phase, um, of a payroll system overhaul. First was bi-weekly pay. Second is direct deposit, paperless, um, paperless payroll. And this is the third piece, uh, which would be to kind of bring in a modern, um, HR payroll accounting system. Um, there's no union negotiation, uh, required to go along with this, Mr. Borg confirmed. Um, we think it's good also because employees are, are going to be more, I think there's more certainty for, for employees, right? They can have, you know, accurate visibility to their vacation days. They can track accruals, um, within their pay stub, so they know how much vacation time they have, how much PTO, how much sick time. Um, you know, I just, I can't even imagine not having that information as an employee. Um, so I'm glad that, uh, you know, handy. So it's great that they're going to be able to have this now, um, right in their paychecks. Uh, so that's really all I have from the committee. Um, this wasn't budgeted. Fiscal year 21 budget. There wasn't really any applicable reserve fund money, um, available from Mr. Borg. It's another thing that we asked about. Um, the system will be ready to go in January, uh, well. Um, so, uh, we supported the measure, um, six to zero. Favorable action.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Pari. Mr. Borg, anything you'd want to add to this?
Council President through you. Just again, uh, as council vice president, uh, alluded to, one, three-phased, uh, part of this pay system upgrade. Um, it is a, uh, the amount that we're asking for does pay for the partial year that we have. Uh, and then it will be a budgeted item, uh, as a part of the, uh, treasurer's, uh, collector's budget going forward from this point.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, well, let me take a motion and then I'll open it up for discussion.
I move to approve measure 2021, 22, funding request from free cash for a town-wide time and attendance system.
Second. I have a motion, a second. I just noticed, I think in the agenda, we have the measure listed wrong. It's 2021 dash 022, right?
That's, I, I should have said that. Um, did I not say that?
That's what you said. I'm just looking at my. We have these all wrong? What, what fiscal year are we in? We're fiscal 21 right now, right?
It, it's 21. We, we have corrected, uh, council president through you. We have corrected the actual measures, but this was in the packet, uh, that we posted online, so we could not change it. But, uh, they, they have been updated to 2021.
Right, thank you. God, Miss Billinkoff, we've been dying here without you. Welcome, welcome to the team. All right, so measure 2021 dash 022, I have a motion for Mr. Pari, a second for Ms. Cathcart. Any discussion on this? Ms. Boyce.
Um, I just want to note that on the measure, it's not signed. Even the one that we re-, that we received in the email, I checked because I thought, because the paper that I picked up on Friday. But the one that we received today, the document's not signed. So I just want to note that, so they don't forget. To make sure they sign it.
We'll get it signed. Thank you, Ms. Boyce. Anyone else? Mr. Pari.
Yeah, thank you. I actually have one thing. We didn't talk about it at finance committee, so I reserve my own, um, comments. Uh, but, so I, I voted along with the committee to support this. I think it's a good investment. Um, but like my only concern on this, it's not really a concern, but something I want to point out for the council is, uh, we're using free cash. Um, and I know we have a lot of free cash, and, uh, one of the things that I think we want to see is a, is a plan, right, for, for what are we going to use that free cash for? There's a lot of items on the table. We've talked about a lot of potential capital investments. Um, we have an opportunity to allow that. Uh, and just with the agenda items that we have later tonight, you know, we have a, a backhoe, um, in libraries. We're starting to see some, some usage from the town of this free cash, at least being proposed to us. Um, so one of the things I just wanted to point out is, you know, personally, I'd just like to see that, that strategy. Um, and as we start to see some of these investments coming in, the more that I see, the more requests that I see coming in for free cash without that strategy or that meeting, that would probably raise my, um, my concern level. No concern now, but again, just, just pointing that out.
Sure, that makes, that, that makes sense. I assume that makes sense to you, Mr. Borg?
It, it does.
Yeah, good, okay. Um, yeah, the only, only, uh, if there's no other discussion, the only comment I was going to just add is that this is actually, I think, resonates a little bit with me with the things we were talking a few years ago about driving operational efficiency improvements in the town. And, but actually, both the, the email upgrade and the system, if I recall, were both things that were floated back then in terms of kind of suboptimal antiquated systems that we were operating with that were holding back ability to track time and drive efficiency. So, um, so this, this resonates for me. Any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll go to a vote. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Uh, it's a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Shanahan. Uh, Shanahan votes aye. Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Prescott says yes. Ms. Boyce?
Yes.
Boyce says yes. Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Gregory's a yes. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Simmons is a yes. Ms. Cathcart?
Yes.
Ms. Cathcart says yes. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Lennox is a yes. Mr. Pari?
Yes.
Pari's a yes. I keep appointing a yes. So that's nine, zero, passing measure 2021 dash 022. All right, we'll move on to new business. We have a, as Mr. Pari alluded to, we have a handful of, uh, uh, other funding requests, uh, to ultimately refer to the finance subcommittee, but we'll just go through them here one at a time. Uh, measure 2021 dash 023, a funding request from free cash to replace a backhoe for the DPW Highway Division. Uh, Mr. Borg, just the highlights, and then we can go ahead and refer to finance.
Council President through you, uh, uh, a little something more than a year ago, a backhoe in the pu- public works, uh, department caught on fire and was destroyed. We received a, uh, insurance settlement, uh, which does not cover the entire cost of replacement, uh, before you. And we did send out an updated, uh, uh, measure that includes transfer from other, uh, items from approved articles that DPW has left over money in that we'd like to spend, uh, and and then purchase a new backhoe. This backhoe is currently available, uh, with the manufacturer, so it'd be a short turnaround. Uh, and it was, uh, you know, it would be an appropriate purchase for, uh, free cash, uh, for this item.
Okay, thanks. All right, Mr. Pari, I'll take a motion.
I'm going to refer measure 2021, 023, funding request from free cash to replace a backhoe for the DPW Highway Division.
Second.
Uh, motion for Mr. Pari, a second for Mr. Lennox. Any discussion on the referral? Ms. Cathcart?
Yeah, um, normally I would hold my discussion for the finance committee, which of course, as you know, I'm on. But I might be able to, um, my question might lead to this not having to go to the finance committee for that reason or for that funding source. I want to know why, um, we are not, or Mr. Borg did not recommend to Mr. Halliwell to ask for a reserve fund transfer request.
Mr. Borg?
Council President through you. I, I did not receive one, a reserve transfer request from the, uh, public works director for this particular item. I mean, he, he's on the line. Uh, Mr. Halliwell, i- if, if you want to chime in on this, I've unmuted all the callers.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
So the reason why I didn't put in a reserve fund request, uh, transfer request is I usually don't ever do that, so I wasn't really familiar with the process. So if we want to change it to a different process, that's fine by me. I just needed the backhoe.
Okay, and that's, if I may, that's exactly my point. The reserve fund, which we have full responsibility for, is for extraordinary and unforeseen actions. So this could have been handled back then through a reserve fund request that the council could have addressed well, immediately, if not sooner, however you want to phrase it. And then, um, DPW could have gotten this much-needed equipment.
Uh, if I could, we did borrow Waters' backhoe. And at the time when we received the, uh, allotment from the insurance company, we were in a very unsure situation. So we all agreed at the departmental level with Mr. Borg, Mr. Gallagher at the time, that we would hold off on that for a period of time. Now winter's coming, um, so we would go, he was, they were going through these measures anyway. Um, and I just didn't think to do it as a reserve fund.
So the, uh, the motion we have is, uh, a, a free cash reserve. So I don't think we can vote on an alternative motion. So I, I think what we should probably do is go ahead and, uh, defer it. And if, uh, the source of funding should change, then that can come back from the finance subcommittee and we can, we can vote the alternative. That, real great question though, Ms. Cathcart. Thank you.
Um, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, uh, so we have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Shanahan.
Didn't we just decide we were deferring? Or Mike?
Nope, so we have a. Yes, uh, so the motion on the floor is, uh, to refer to the finance subcommittee. So we're voting, if we, if we vote yes, you're voting to refer to the finance subcommittee, then they can make a determination on the funding source and bring the measure back.
Oh, yes.
Okay. A yes for Mr. Shanahan. Ms. Prescott?
Yes.
Ms. Prescott's a yes. Ms. Boyce?
Yes.
Ms. Boyce is a yes. Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory is a yes. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons is a yes. Ms. Cathcart?
Yes.
Ms. Cathcart's a yes. Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Lennox is a yes. Mr. Pari?
Yes.
Pari's a yes. Uh, I keep appointing a yes. So nine, zero, uh, to the finance subcommittee. Uh, measure 2021 dash 025, this is free cash to supplement the library's budget. Uh, Mr. Borg?
Council President through you. Um, with the onset of COVID, uh, earlier this year in March, and we asked departments to turn back funds, uh, and we put into place a hiring freeze and a spending freeze. Uh, we also asked our department directors to roll up their sleeves and produce a budget, uh, that was based on our three scenarios of a 10%, a 20%, 30% reduction. The library, uh, and, uh, Mr. Ward is on tonight too, and he can answer any of your questions regarding this. But we, they, they did. They provided that. But we, they did. They provided that reduced budget to us, right? They also, as a result, put into a waiver request status with that reduced budget that we approved for the library, meaning that the accreditation that the library currently holds would have to go to a waiver status, and we'd request a waiver, and there's no guarantee that we would receive it. So we're requesting to take the funding initially, that, what they returned, and the library did return fifty thousand dollars to us in the turnbacks at the end of the FY. The subsequent budget in twenty-one was reduced as a result, and so the accreditation is in jeopardy at this point. But I, just, but let me caveat that comment. It's in jeopardy, but we could still apply for a waiver, but there's no guarantee that we would receive the waiver. If we lose the accreditation, we lose our interloan library privileges and some other aspects of our library system that Mr. Ward can go into greater, you know, depth and detail. But in conjunction with the strategy that we laid out when we did the turnbacks, I'm asking that fifty thousand dollars from free cash that was developed from the turnbacks be returned back to the library in, to that and an additional sum for a total of sixty-four thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars to ensure that we achieve that accreditation for our library.
And Mr. Borg, I would just add, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Simmons, that one of the nuances with the library that we learned really, really well, as we were working on the override a few years ago, is that they've got to maintain certain, certain funding levels, and their accreditation is, for better or worse, based on the, the quote-unquote "town's commitment" to the library and funding it at the appropriate level. So, so that's why, you know, this kind of feels like a circular argument, or not an argument, but a kind of a circular discussion. But given kind of the way things set up in the library system and how they judge funding and everything, has our handle. But I think it's important for people to know that. And while I certainly am beyond impressed, the library's ability to tighten the belt and do what you had asked of them, I can understand the situation it now puts us in. Mr. Simmons.
Is there a, a time requirement on that accreditation? Are we up against any deadlines? When do we have to show that we are committed to the library to save?
Council President, I'll refer to Mr. Ward to answer that.
Hey, Mr. Ward.
Mr. President through you. The Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners has received all the applications for waivers. They will review them at their February meeting, and then they will start to make final decisions. They're actually delaying everything this year by a month from what they would usually schedule for, for reviewing these things because of the situation with COVID. But the, the deadline would be their meeting, which I believe is going to be in the first week of February.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. And Ms. Cathcart.
Yes. First of all, nice to see you, Frank.
Likewise.
I, I want to say, as someone who has been around for many, many years, this waiver is not the first time that the libraries had to do this. Frank, I think you all agree with me.
Yeah.
We, we did ask departments to turn back funds, and they were amazing in their response. But I have always wholeheartedly believed that if we found ourselves in the position that, thanks to God, we did find ourselves in with this extra money, that I would ask the Finance Committee to go to Mr. Borg and say that we want to put everybody back to where they started and return that money to them because of the extra free cash that we found. So I'd just like to hopefully convince all of you that this is the way to go, and we need to approve this. This is going to still get referred, I hope not, but to the Finance Committee. But if so, that's going to add another layer. So hopefully you'll agree with me, and we can move right on.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Cathcart. Yeah, the only thing I would say too is just, I can imagine the public watching here and the newspaper in particular. There's not a funding issue at the library, right? We had budget for this. It was turned back in. We've got the funds to be able to maintain the accreditation of libraries. This is, this is not an issue. We just administratively need to take care of it. So I, I just would point that out, because I know people are watching. I can imagine the headline tomorrow, North Library in Jeopardy of Losing Accreditation. Not true. I'm sure the council will take care of that. Ms. Voice.
So are we, are we planning to give back all of the departments, the funds that they have given back to us this year? I mean, is that, is that the plan?
Julia, Mr. President, point of order. Just, Julia, I appreciate your, your concern for all the other departments. I have it too. But that's not what this subject matter is. We're talking about right now returning funds to the library. I did not suggest that we have already come to that kind of discussion. So I'm going to ask respectfully that, you just withdraw your question. Stay on the mic.
Right, well, I only ask because I would like to give the library back the money that they had returned to us. It's just that if, if we do that, I mean, are we, you know, are we in the position that we would be able to do for the other departments? That's, that was why, that was the only reason why I brought, brought that up.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Ms. Voice. And I'll just intervene on this. You know, I think one of the reasons we have kind of restructured our rules to try to get these into subcommittees is so we can vet these questions. Just, Ms. Cathcart, I think you, you had like a small slip of the tongue. You said the library, you said all department, but I think that's probably what prompted Ms. Voice. Neither here nor there. We all understand what you're saying. Let's go ahead. I, I think we should take the measure to get this into finance, so we could just dot the i's, cross the t's, make sure that we've got everything buttoned up, and then the council can vote without concern. I'll take a motion, Mr. Parry.
Yeah, I'll move to refer Measure twenty-twenty-one dash zero-two-five, funding request from Free Cash to supplement the library budget to the Finance Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Motion for Mr. Parry, a second for Ms. Cathcart. And Mr. Borg and I did talk before the meeting, so even if we do agree to cancel the meeting at the end of December during the holiday week, so long as we take care of this business at our January eleventh council meeting, that provides plenty of time for the library in advance of the, the board, the council, whatever it is, the director's meeting in February. So a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Ms. Voice.
I had a question for Mr. Borg. On here, it says, it mentions the fifty thousand, but where does the fourteen thousand and two hundred and ninety-nine, how did he come up with, with that extra amount?
Council President through you. Mr. Ward can answer that question as well, but it's just to achieve the funding level required to
Okay.
Get to the accreditation.
Okay, so, so the amount that you have is what is needed for the, the accreditation?
That is correct, and Council President through you, the fifty thousand is just to, to show that this department turned back fifty thousand in the year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But we can make sure, Mr. Parry, I'll ask you as the Finance Commissioner, make sure all the numbers are buttoned up when it comes back to us, if you could.
Yes.
Thanks. Any other questions or discussion? All right, I'll take it to a roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan. Mr. Shanahan votes yes. Ms. Prescott.
Yes.
Prescott votes yes. Ms. Voice.
Yes.
Voice votes yes. Mr. Gregory.
Yes.
Gregory votes yes. Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Simmons votes yes. Ms. Cathcart.
Yes.
Ms. Cathcart votes yes. Mr. Lennox.
Yes.
So Lennox votes yes. Mr. Parry.
Yes.
Mr. Parry votes yes. I keep a point vote. Yes, that's nine-zero referring to Finance Subcommittee, and we'll make sure we take this back up on January eleventh. Okay, discussion. Can we do this? I'd just like to take this out of order, just because I think the discussion's going to take long. We should probably should have caught this, Mr. Borg, before. Can we, let's, let's take up the election question. We'll vote that, and then we'll have the discussion on the reorganizations, if that's okay with everybody. So, Mr. Borg, can you just give us the latest on the election?
All right, Council President through you. We've received a memorandum that is shared with you in the packet. Hopefully you will have caught it and received it, but it outlines the, from our Director of Elections, that the following offices be listed on the April sixth ballot. Town Council nine for a two-year term, Board of Electric Commissioners, two positions for three-year terms, Board of Public Works, two for a three-year terms, Board of Public Works, a one-year unexpired term created by the vacancy of the resignation of a Board of Public Works member, Parks Commission, two positions for three-year terms, and then the School Committee, three positions for three-year terms. Those were submitted by Pat Dolan for our upcoming list, and just this is a call to approve those for the ballot.
Okay, and the, the schedule, just for the sake of the public, as Mr. Borg said, the town election we're calling for right now will be April sixth. Then the sequence of events leading up to that nomination papers will be available on January sixth. Last day to take out papers is February eleventh. Last day to return papers is February sixteenth. At that point, there will be a drawing to determine ballot position on the ballot. That date is to be announced. March second is the deadline for any ballot questions. March fourth is the last day to file a withdrawal or objection for nomination. And then March seventeenth is the final day to register to vote for the town election. And then the last day to get an absentee ballot is April fifth, the day before the election. That's the sequence. I did just one other thing I wanted to point out. I've gotten this question by quite a few people. The reason this is all later than it's traditionally been is because with the passage of the Charter, we did away with preliminary elections. So before this year, you had to have the election earlier. I'm sorry, you had to have the process earlier because you had to know if you had more than two times the number of candidates for open seats. Because if you did, you then had to hold a preliminary election in February. So prior to the charter papers, you all will recall, you know, you had to pull them in late November, early December, and the whole process was earlier. Because now there's only one election, there are no preliminaries, the process can shift a little bit later. So that's the background there. Any question or, Mr. Borg additions?
Just would add that we'll make sure that all these dates and all the information are posted on the town website and made available to the public.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? All right, I don't think I see any. No hearing none, seeing none. We'll go ahead and I'll take a motion. Mr. Borg, is this as simple as a motion to call for the town election on April sixth?
It is.
I moved to call for the annual town election on April sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
A motion for Mr. Parry, a second for Ms. Voice. Any other discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Shanahan.
Aye.
Mr. Shanahan votes yes. Ms. Prescott.
Yes.
Ms. Prescott votes yes. Ms. Voice.
Yes.
Ms. Voice votes yes. Mr. Gregory.
Yes.
Gregory votes yes. Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Simmons votes yes. Ms. Cathcart.
Yes.
Ms. Cathcart votes yes. Mr. Lennox.
Yes.
Mr. Lennox votes yes. Mr. Parry.
Yes.
Parry votes yes, and I keep a point vote yes. That's nine-zero calling for the election. All right, let's go ahead and move to the discussion regarding reorganization of functions and departments within town. Mr. Borg, I'll turn it over to you.
Council President through you. Thank you, and if you'll bear with me, I do have some slides that I would like to present tonight to kind of start off this discussion and engage with the Town Council for realignment and reorganization. So let me go ahead and do a screen share.
And Mr. Borg, you know, I don't mean to preempt you, but it might be good, just as you, maybe even before you, you kind of dive into all of the details, just set the sequence of events here, because I think it's important for the council and the public to know this is sort of your initial sharing and briefing tonight, and then, you know, we're expecting subcommittee conversations and budget process there. Can you maybe just start with that, just so people understand what's expected of them tonight, which is nothing other than understanding? That might be, that might be good before you dive into the content.
Sure, absolutely. Council President through you. So from my, my initial days of appointment and coming on board, I've been looking at the organization and looking at efficiencies and effectiveness and how different departments are organized. And that led to the Charter, which has a specific article whereby the town manager can present to the Town Council recommendations for reorganization, and we'll talk about that in a second. But essentially, over the past few months, been looking at the organization, having discussions with department directors, and getting to this point where I'd come before you tonight to present a, and open the discussion with the Town Council. So that's what tonight really is, is trying to share with you my vision, what I see, where I look at different areas that we can potentially take advantage. And then, as this process moves forward from tonight, I would expect that some of these would be taken up and referred to different subcommittees with, by the Town Council for further investigation. So over the next few months, because I do believe that this whole process is tied to the budget, and what we're trying to do is set the stage for some of these realignment that can take place now, but some of the reorganization initiatives would take an act of the budget, and the budget to be adjusted. So pairing these committee investigations and discussions to the budget, I think is appropriate, and then by the time we approve budget, you, if there are any of these measures that the council believe are worthy enough to proceed on, we would put that into place, and these changes could go into effect as soon as one July. Now, you do have some other options as well, and I'll mention those as I go through the brief. I mean, you could approve technically a position and then not fund it. I mean, we could, you could say that this is a sound idea, but potentially we would not be able to have immediate funding available in the coming year, so we'll approve at this point, but then not fund until the appropriate time. So essentially, we start the discussion tonight, begin the engagement, and over the next few months, you know, work out what potential changes we would like to adopt. I, I would like to have that sometime in March that allows the impacted and affected departments to be able to modify their current budget process, because I will give you an initial budget brief on the, in February, and then we won't go final budget brief and approve budget until June, mid-June. So around March, that gives the departments the time to be able to adjust, include any of these potential changes in theirs, come back through Finance Committee, and then come before the whole council and vote this out. So that's kind of the genesis of the timeline. Talk today, you know, work through each of the committees, hopefully by March, come to an agreement, and then incorporate into the budget, and then roll into the next FY with those changes in place.
So.
Sounds like somebody is not on mute.
I, I muted that caller, Council President.
Okay, so, so thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Borg. I just think it's important for the council and, and the public and maybe watch to know that this is the, the sort of the first sharing of this with the council, and then there's going to be detailed alignment work to happen in advance of the advance of the, the budget, whereas this ultimately needs to get funded. So I'll turn it over to you. Just a side note, you might want to put your slides on presentation mode, so it gets a little bigger.
Yeah, so I was going to say that.
Standby.
Oh, it's got that.
Yeah, I've got to come out of presentation mode and then redo it here for you. Hold on.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. I'll, I'll move through these as quickly as possible and then we'll come back to questions at the end. That way I can get through all the information and get it out in a timely fashion. Okay. All right, this is the outline that I'll follow for the, the briefing tonight. Just real quick, I'll discuss the objectives and the outcomes that the, there's a difference between realignment and reorganization. We'll talk through that and I have initiatives for both. And then some considerations and then a proposed timeline that'll kind of just summarize the, the comments we gave you a second ago. For, for your reference, right? So starting with the Charter, Article 4 under Town Manager, Section 4-1, Bowleg's 20, that's specifically where it talks about the town managers can make recommendations for effectiveness and efficiencies in form and function to the Town Council. Master under law, Part 1, Title 7, specifically into Chapter 43, Section 12, talks about reorganization, and that's also a guideline applies as well. The end result of all this is a bylaw that would be generated to change the organization. So as I took this on and started looking at and examining the organization, you know, with the change of government that the town experienced approximately 18 months ago, you had a system where boards and committees and relationships were built in, in different stovepipes throughout that, the organization. And then now a centralized, strong town manager model with the Town Council. I, I was looking for, as I undertook this, ways to make the organization more effective, more efficient and accountable. It, it was simply one of the primary reasons for doing this. And I think this is something that the town manager and the Town Council should evaluate continually. It's also, I think we owe the residents and taxpayers that we, we can re-event and evaluate ourselves and come up with a better way of providing those public services, right? So that we can be the very best and provide the very best to our residents and taxpayers, right? We also want to create a workforce that is supportive for success, right? That it's capable and innovative. So I took these into consideration as I built some of these recommendations. But also, it, it was looking at the core functions of each of our departments and are they currently aligned correctly? Are they in the right place? Are there potential areas where we could achieve some cost savings? Maybe potentially some manpower savings if we were to combine and have the benefit of immediate communication, collaboration and coordination from within a new, a department? Where we have redundancies, can we reduce those or eliminate those? Can take advantage of our known and capabilities that we can exploit today and save the town money? And then, this, I think, has to be tied to that, that budget process. Because I could, technically, I guess I could come to the Town Council at any time and propose a, a change. But then if there was a budgetary component of that, you know, we'd be back into and providing a supplemental budget. So I think it makes sense for this process to be, you know, to dovetail right into the budget process that the town's going through. So I saw realignment and reorganization as two different things. Realignment was, you know, an, an action that affects function of a department. And that not, not necessarily, would not necessarily require Town Council improvement. So you'll see some proposals and you'll understand where I don't think Town Council has to be involved in the realignment. However, per the Charter, right? If I'm looking to transfer, consolidate, abolish, or create an authorization for functions or a hierarchy between two departments, that clearly falls within what the Charter calls for, for, you know, engagement of the Town Council. So you're going to see tonight a presentation of both realignment, right? And reorganization. So I'll start with the realignment initiatives. The first one is an action that we've already put underway. It's the Pond and Beach Administration. Working with the Conservation Department this year, Shannon Palmer, our Conservation Agent, a, a team of one and a part-time employee, had the responsibility of maintaining our ponds and beaches, the upkeep, the maintenance. And she did this and the lifeguard requirements, the parking requirements, the advertising, through the Parks Department. The Parks Department was doing it. So my recommendation as we went forward with this was to realize, is to shift the responsibility for pond and beach recreation to the Parks and Recreation Department. And what we would do is build the budget this year and shift the budget that was in the conservation line items into Parks and Rec, who is actually going to do this. The responsibilities that would be included in this would be the maintenance, parking monitoring, lifeguards. The budget impact is zero. This requires no dollars and what this does is correctly align that responsibility with the Parks and Recreation Department. The next one, we had an instance where we had a long-term bargaining unit employee in Human Resources. And that person was involved in helping HR develop budget scenarios for collective bargaining negotiations. That was a conflict of interest. So we moved to take that position when the individual retired and replace it with a confidential assistant for the HR Department, where they could be fully involved in all bargaining unit negotiations, producing all the pay scales that are required as a result of this. This directly supports the Human Resources Department and the budget impact is zero on this alignment. The next one, zoning and conservation clerk. We have two part-time employees in, one in zoning and one in conversation, conservation. This realignment initiative would combine and does combine the zoning and conservation clerk into one full-time employment. These were two part-time employment, uh, individuals with benefits. Now we went back, bargained with the, the unions and now have, and put this clearly in the APSME bargaining unit. And this now would support both zoning and conservation and gives us a full-time employee to deal with all issues regarding zoning or conservation in those two specifics, full-time in the building. The budget impact is minimal, but we're working the final numbers just to make sure, because the previous zoning clerk was paid on a, an agreement, a side agreement with an individual that was employed by the town at a time and a half rate. So we have to calculate the exact cost of what the FTE, but it should be only a minimal gain and well within our current ability to fund. The next alignment is, is something we've talked about and you may recall from our discussions about Lenore's Pantry and our public-private partnership with the Hakamakwai on our food collaborative initiative in the community. This seeks to take and solidify our move of Lenore's Pantry down to Allen Avenue, out of Town Hall, where it currently resides, and partner with the Hakamakwai going forward. This is a zero-dollar impact. However, we still own Allen Avenue as a town facility. We have a current project that's out determining what repairs need to be made to Allen Avenue and what the path forward that. But there's also a cost-sharing component with the Hakamakwai for use of that facility. So that is to be determined on the facilities because we do have a responsibility to maintain that. However, I will say this, if the cost of operating, repairing the Allen Avenue's facility becomes far more than we're able to afford, we would roll Lenore's Pantry back into and then sever the relationship with the Hakamakwai. So we're, we're going to let the facility and its cost to maintain kind of drive and assist with the decision there. On procurement. Now, by the Charter, the town manager is the Chief Procurement Officer for the town. And under the previous form of government, where you had boards, enterprise funds, all with their operating project, projects, budgets, conducting procurements through their own MCPPO officers, no issues. However, as the Chief Procurement Officer, this alignment initiative looks to solve a problem where the town manager, specifically the Chief Procurement Officer, doesn't have visibility of all the procurements, the RFPs, the RFB's, the RFIs that leave town and go out for solicitation. So in order to centralize that and, you know, maintain the role of the procurement official in town, this alignment initiative looks to centralize the procurement process. The budget impact is zero, right? The next slide, though, gives you and provides you an example of, of how this would work. So essentially, under this procedure, departments would still develop all their RFPs, RFIs, RFB's, and they would, any outstanding RFPs, RFB's and RFIs that they've received bids for, they would still do the awarding process. All we're going to do is add in a procurement board that would take in all of the proposed RFPs, give them one check, approve those, and then send them out to advertise. A change here is that I would have all of the potential respondents to our RFPs, RFB's and RFIs send the town clerk and who would officially receive those bid nomination packages into, and then bring back to the procurement board for a public opening. This way, all of our public opening requirements are done at one place at one time with the official timestamp from the town clerk. Then departments would then receive all the bid packages. They'd select who is going to be awarded and report that back to the procurement board. And then those awards are announced. And then the cycle repeats. I see this taking place on a recurring two-week cycle. So every two weeks, we'd be holding a procurement board that would advertise, open bids, and then announce awards. So, and that would give the Chief Procurement Officer in town the visibility of all the different contracts, all the different moving parts of procurement for 30B, Public Works Construction, school construction. And then also, you know, not taking away from any other board or committee, they still have their requirements. But as the Chief Procurement Official of the town, this would move to centralize that and give visibility and the ability to do quality control before those products leave Town Hall. The next one. This is an alignment initiative, what I call staffing and equipment authorization. This is to, to pick up where the, the established timesheets that are built as a part of the budget process to create a living document that tracks each department's authorized number of personnel and the number on hand, and also the department's equipment. Part of the Charter is that I have to report and ensure that all of the town's property is properly accounted for on an annual basis. So in compliance with the Charter, we would do that. And I'm going to, and this is again a zero-dollar budget impact. It essentially would look something similar to this, where you would see the staffing portion for, by each department. I would create this spreadsheet for each department where I would show the department, the pay grade, the job title, and then authorized, and then the number on hand. What this does, as the town manager, if there was any department that needed additional personnel or additional equipment, they have an existing authorization of what equipment they need and where their personnel manning would be. And this puts it all into one simple form that tracks it by department. So you see also here an example of how we would attract the equipment, and I use Public Works in this example, where they would have a truck six-by-six dump, right? And then the, the specific description where it might add in international, they would say how many they're authorized and how many on hand. And also, as we go through budget each year, every department and Town Council would know that, hey, Public Works has authorized two, you know, six-by-six dumps. If they have two on hand, there's no need unless it's life cycle replacement, and that's what it would be noted as for that particular piece of equipment. So we have a basis of authorization for each department for both personnel and equipment. Okay, moving on. Now to talk about the reorganization initiative. The first thing I'd like to, just a general organizational hierarchy. So here in town, I, people have described themselves as departments, directors, department heads, sections. What I'm trying to do with this is set the standard. Here's how we're going to organize the, the town government. We will have, my proposal is through you, Town Council, to establish administration. We would have offices, departments, divisions, branches and section. Each person assigned to or working for the town would be in one of these categories. You would be, if you're in an office, and I'll talk about that because that's kind of new. A department, very, a lot of you are familiar with that. But for example, Department of Public Works would have a division of water, a division, a highway division, a sewer division, right? And one of the proposals you'll see from me here in a few minutes is the movement of sewer, I mean, correction, of solid waste as a department to become a division under Public Works. So this next aspect of this is, how did we want to organize the office initiatives that I'm describing here? So I, I saw as you looked across at all the departments, well, if you were just to organize them by like versus like, right? Common responsibilities, the common responsibilities and see how they fall. This is what my recommendation would be, that Public Works as a, as a department is really its own office, but it has several divisions, water, sewer, highway. And then my recommendation, as you see in red there, solid waste, to be realigned or reorganized, excuse me, with Public Works. Public Safety, you have police, fire and emergency management. And then I would like to organize animal control at this point, but not change their current affiliation. They would still be a department, but they would be under that public safety umbrella. And that's the category that they would fall into. You have the administration, which is the catch-all for all the departments that didn't fit anywhere else, but also worked very closely and specifically with the town manager. So the town clerk, who also shares responsibilities with the Town Council on a number of items, human resources, town manager's office, elections, IT. And then one that you'll see from me tonight, the proposals for a facilities director, a department of one, if you will, and more about that in a few minutes. The next category that I'd like to see developed is community development. This would be planning, zoning, conservation and buildings and economic development. Wrap them all up under one umbrella. I would like to establish, and it's my proposal, to establish the Office of Community Development and have a director specifically for that responsibility to coordinate all the efforts of those different departments. Those departments that you see listed there would become divisions under the office or remain as departments of community development as needed. The next organizational office, if you will, is finance. This is the finance team, the treasurer collector, the accountant and the assessor. They make up the finance and I work very closely with them, but they're loosely organized as under that umbrella. The last category that I see organizing town departments under this umbrella of an office is Health and Human Services. This would include parks. Parks kind of has, and Recreation has their, their foot in a couple different areas, right? You could see some similarities to Public Works, where they support a lot of field maintenance and different items, but they do provide through Recreation a lot of support and Human Services to the town. So I'm wrapping them up and putting them in this organization under Health and Human Services. You have the Health Agent, you have the Veterans, the Council on Aging, right? And our Senior Senator Director, the, and the Library. Those would round out the Health and Human Services category. So as I took this on, these were the initial organizational cuts of how I saw organizing all the departments. If you look, excuse me. If you look at the, the Charter manual that was sent out to the public and it was approved, it has the One Town Diagram, the line and bar chart on the initial pages. and it was approved, it has the One Town Diagram, the line-and-bar chart on the initial pages. And under the town manager, it has 30 or 40, you know, different departments and boards. I see those loosely falling into these categories, these offices, if you will. Now, I'm only recommending one that actually named a director, and that's Community Development, because I see that as an integral part of moving the town forward. Okay, let me go on. Okay, so I'll go through each of the reorganization initiatives that I'd like to present. The first one is the Solid Waste Department. Currently, Solid Waste Department is located here in Town Hall. They have their own office, they have public facing. They operate an enterprise fund here. But when you look at a number of communities across the Commonwealth and in other states, Solid Waste is a Public Works. It falls clearly under Public Works, it's not a separate entity. And in my previous tenure as a Public Works Director, I managed the solid waste, recycling, environmental aspects of that function. My recommendation is that the Solid Waste Department be reorganized as a division under Public Works. There would be zero salary cost to do this. There is some discussion about facilities, but I'm working with both the Public Works Director and the Solid Waste Director on what those facility requirements are and need to be. And then potentially some process dollars that would be saved by the town by doing this. Because you would be able to consolidate the billing for three enterprise funds into one organization, the potential exists here to reduce the number of clerks that potentially handle all the billing aspects of this in Public Works under the system. And then to share a common system. Right now, Public Works uses one billing system, and Solid Waste uses a different billing system. So I see some opportunity here and some efficiencies by potentially maybe putting the solid waste fees under the sewer bill and linking those two aspects together. So, but I think that's got to be fleshed out a bit more along with the facilities and making sure that it makes sense. Here's what, the rationale that I used for this particular recommendation was, improved service to our residents, rapid response from a new team that could, if you have debris in the road or, you know, something that was normally handled by the Solid Waste Department, the Solid Waste Director now has a direct line sitting next to the Public Works Director, who has all the trucks and drivers to go pick up that potential, you know, debris or leftover trash or whatever it is. So you create that instant collaboration. Not that it doesn't exist today, but it's separated by location and then separated by responsibilities based on their current organization. Again, I talked about the billing already. I mentioned now the manpower and equipment support. There's already a number of areas where Public Works and Solid Waste collaborate at the transfer station. This would just go to reinforce that. But also the potential of looking at the composting site and how we might absorb that. One of the ideas that I'd like to absorb is the operations fees and costs associated with running the compost site. Could that be absorbed or included in the enterprise fund from Solid Waste? If that's the case, you could then move some of these general fund items into the solid waste aspect of this enterprise fund and cover some of that aspect and save the town money and push that into that enterprise fund. Most importantly, though, I think that this gives it a customer service focus and standardization. So one department, Public Works, that is already engaged in, you know, a variety of utility discussions from sewer and water with the public, it's not a far stretch to now add in that public solid waste aspect under Public Works. So I think that helps the Solid Waste Team, you know, expand their ability to respond and have a, you know, almost the effectiveness of a call center for responsiveness to our solid waste issues when they arise. And then this would, I think, firmly plants enterprise fund, three of our enterprise funds firmly under Public Works. So there is some discussion here, I think, that has to be vetted because I think bylaws currently establish that the previous Board of Selectmen set the rate for solid waste, which would now then default to the town manager and having discussion about how that rate might be controlled. So I do look forward to having those discussions on this and how that might flesh out. Just a real quick snapshot of the current solid waste organization. Again, as you look through these regular part-time positions and part-time seasonals you see here, but effectively you have the department head, an administrative coordinator with two office assistants, and then at the recycling center, a number of attendants that are regular part-time, and then a seasonal laborer. The proposal is fairly simple, is to take that entire organization and shift it and transfer it as a division under Public Works, where you would see solid waste now under Public Works. Again, for the rationale and the benefits that I previously had mentioned. The next one. In my town manager report tonight, you did hear that I have accepted and received the resignation from Sheila Skaduto, the Assistant Assessor. So this one is presenting itself as an opportunity for the town that we have a known shortage effective January 1st for this position to take a look at. Potentially, maybe there might be a conversation with the town council that we split out the Assistant Assessor's proposal and fast-track that as we go through the process, as we go to hire a new assessor. Here's my proposal. As I've looked through this and talked to a number of folks, both residents and council members, we have an opportunity now to reorganize and build a capability internal to our assessors to be able to do the assessments in-house. I had a number of residents say to me that they've never had our vendor that we hire to do the assessment knock on their door, call them, email them, to verify, to come into their house to see all the changes that have been done when they do the assessment value. I think the dollars that we spend on assessments that we hire a vendor to conduct for us, we can now change this department into an organization that would be able to do assessments within town. Combine that with some of our technology innovations that we're looking to onboard. We're working with a company now that can provide us two aerial overflights of the town and all the associated imagery twice a year. We can use that as a database to potentially look at certain properties that had building permits taken, or maybe have not had building permits taken. And if we notice any changes, having the ability to have the assessor and a team on hand that can do those assessments, we can launch those assessors to that property, knock on the door, verify the work, and have the proper assessment. It also provides us the opportunity to conduct a line and measure, to completely reset the database of property values across town based on a current measurements and line verification of every property. So this proposal seeks to augment the Assistant Assessor with an actual assessor and retain the Assistant Assessor, but change the department into two supporting clerks that do all of our assessments in-house. We still need to investigate based on what that salary requirement might look at and then what cost savings we could achieve within the department as it's potentially reorganized. It would look something, I'll show you the line-and-bar chart here in a second, but the rationale was the assessor is an integral part of the finance team here in town. As you've just heard in the previous town council meetings on setting the tax rate and the split, the assessor and the Board of Assessors are key to that, right? They are an essential part of that finance team. The potential savings of being able to conduct the assessments in-house need to be vetted thoroughly. Because if we can do what we pay vendors to do for far less cost, more responsive, more accurate, with somebody that actually knows the town than an outside vendor who might not have the same familiarity, we benefit by having the most up-to-date and realistic assessments of our property. Plus, it allows us to coordinate manpower and equipment. It gives us that customer service focus that I believe we have, but I want to enhance and take to the next level. And it builds on that town familiarity and knowledge base. This would kind of, is the existing team today. This is what they look like right now. They have an Assistant Assessor, a data collector, and two admin assistants. My proposal for your consideration is that you would have a principal assessor. And then retain the Assistant Assessor, a principal clerk, and a clerk, and have that, the abilities to do in-house assessments for the town. The next area I'd like to bring your attention to. As I assessed and looked at the way the town was organized when I came on board, I noticed that Chief Riley, the police chief, he was working projects on the front steps of the building, the Police Department, where he had those redone. He was working HVAC issues. I watched the Assistant Town Manager here work, and when he was the Acting Town Manager, work a number of facility issues here in Town Hall. Everything from commodes to HVAC units on the roof, flooding in the basement. I know that each of the department heads that reside in different facilities all had on their plate facilities requirements. What we did not have, and what I did not see, and it's no fault of any department head who are doing outstanding jobs managing all their facilities, but we have no common standard for facilities management, right? We have no accurate assessment of the service life of all of our assets on each of these facilities. My proposal in this reorganization initiative is to create a director-level position, appoint, and then confirm through Town Council a Director of Facilities. This individual would have no other staff. We would support out of the town manager office with clerical support, but they would be responsible for all the buildings in ensuring that we have a set of common standards, that we have somebody tracking and maintaining each of those assets that is responsible for the preventive and scheduled maintenance for each of these facilities. Right now, we ask our department heads to take that on. I'd like to take that off their plate, give this to a facilities professional, ensure that we have one standard. And then I see as an additional duty for this facilities director a huge role as the capital improvement program manager. Not a project manager, but a program manager, the overall program. So they would be very busy monitoring, maintaining our capital improvements program because a many, and a large portion of our capital improvements are facilities-related. Now, I also see this working hand-in-hand with the schools. Now, my recommendation is that the schools and the town jointly fund this and work together and have a standard that goes from schools across every building. But again, that's a negotiation and discussion that we need to have with the schools. And I'm looking, I've already started some of those discussions with the superintendent. But I do believe that having a single facility standard across all of our buildings, including schools, will absolutely save us money. And this is a position where those savings and those forecasting that scheduled maintenance will pay for itself. It would give us the ability to, our real property and asset management for all buildings. Again, I talked about the partnership with schools and the forecasting of maintenance as well as CIP. But one additional perspective that it does provide is property accountability of all of these assets, right? And then relieve department heads of all those non-core functions that, you know, Chief Riley doesn't have to work about the concrete footers at the Police Department. The community school roof provides another example. While schools are absolutely, if this was a joint position, we'd have one individual brokering and working between both organizations to deliver that roof, you know, on time, on schedule, on budget. This is what it would look like currently without schools' involvement. But again, you've heard my desire to work and share this position with the schools for the ability to do this. But this would be, in addition, this would be a budget impact. And I would look for budget savings across the entire organization to be able to create this position. And just a clarifying point here. When I did all of these recommendations, I made the assumption that this was a zero-sum game, right? That at the end of the day, any position that I might add would be the result of savings that we're able to achieve throughout the organization, that we were able to either consolidate potential responsibilities, functions, and positions to achieve the outcomes, and that this would all end up being a zero-sum game. All right, moving on, and almost done here. Thank you for the indulgence here. Going back to that office initiative, right? This is one of the office-level directors that I would like to establish. This is reorganize all of our land development and economic development offices into one offices that prioritizes, revitalizes our town by creating a safe, affordable housing area that stimulates our economic growth and streamlines our permitting process. One of the comments that I've heard from a number of folks and through planning was, we need to figure out how to become and create a streamlined process that brings and allows, you know, potential vendors and builders and contractors to come in and to be able to do business with town. I couldn't agree more. And this is one of the things when I went through my interview that I wanted to talk about. This is a way to be able to do that, to establish a single director that coordinates, collaborates, establishes those priorities in the departments currently of planning, zoning, that zoning clerk, conservation, the building inspector, and our economic development coordinator. I see all of them working collaborative, working together, and to move the town forward, right? To support all of those goals that you all have, you know, approved of developing sustained economic growth, to build a thriving community, and making sure that we're on track with that. There is a budget impact, and that would potentially be around the salary of this director. But again, what I owe you, and I look forward to providing testimony before each of the appropriate committees, is, one, not only how this would potentially work, but how we would achieve the savings to make this position happen. So with that, one of the key tenets here is unity of effort. This, I think, calling out this office and recognizing that we have a community development office with a director really does unify this process and gives us that unity of effort. It establishes priorities and standardizes the outcomes across all of those departments, right? It streamlines the communications, and it goes after that initiative area that I really like to pursue, making permitting work and be responsive quicker. This is how they currently are stovepipe today as individual departments. But look, I don't want to paint a picture that our departments don't cross-talk and collaborate and work together. That is not the case. I would tell you and submit to you, they probably work very much like I have described in this organization, but without that director to that point. But they don't have that director that's giving that priorities and establishing those goals and, you know, fostering that collaboration. But they do work very well in and amongst each other. They do work, you know, side by side and shoulder to shoulder. I'm just saying, the last piece of that puzzle, building on what they've already put together, this is what they look like today. My proposal is, you just add in this top-level community development director, and that's the incentive, you know, to bring that organization to the next level, to be more responsive, to be better than they are today. And they're all very, very good today. My issue is not with their performance. I'm just looking at this and how do we take this to the next level? Okay, two slides to go. So here's something that I think we have to consider as we go forward and as a part of this. One, we do have to impact bargain potentially for some of these changes, right? And those will be identified, and we'd have to do that. But this is impact bargaining, and we'll work very closely with our bargaining units. And, you know, and they have a And, you know, and they have a voice and they get a say. And I'm very interested in, of course, I'll share everything as the results of that impact bargaining as we go forward with this. And that's an important aspect to this, in making sure that their voice is heard as we move forward. The next one, bylaw considerations. This does take a bylaw, right? This will, by charter, I have to submit a bylaw. I would look forward, as we look at the timeline here in a few seconds, to bringing that in March after we have a lot of deliberation and discussion about some of these recommendations. And there, you know, honestly, there may be one or two more that may come out of this as well that we could see. But we also want to make sure that this is realistic and that this is something that we are able to do. And so what you see from me is what I believe is a realistic estimate of what we can do. We have to look at the financial impacts of each of these positions. Hence, I think tying it to the budget, working closely with the finance subcommittee to make sure that, you know, we're being honest and true to what we said, which was a zero-sum game, right? That we want to be able to do this. Now, if it doesn't appear, I think one of the options that the council has available and can leverage is to approve but not fund. So if we think that this is a worthwhile endeavor or consideration on the outcome, but it doesn't look like because of COVID and the impacts to budget. I mean, if we get an FY22 budget estimate from the governor here shortly, and it, you know, calls for us to make very hard decisions, those are discussions that we have, those are impacts they're going to have. Potentially, we might have the opportunity then to create the position but not fund it until such time as that it would be appropriate. So as a timeline and a means to move forward, as I wrap this up, and again, thank you for this opportunity. You're getting the presentation today. I think throughout January and February would be a great time to send these to different committees, everywhere from bylaw to economic development, especially around that community development aspect would be a good one. And then ultimately into FinCom to be able to look at the funding and how we'd be able to do this and make this route. And then in March, having some kind of good, solid foundation that we're building upon, take that back to the department directors. That allows me then time to impact bargain with the affected bargaining units and work the position from there and incorporate that in the FY22 budget submission. You'll get a preliminary from me in February. You'll get a final as we go into June. And I think with this, you have now an opportunity to create some effectiveness, enhancements to function, and then also deliver some potential cost savings because of this reorganization. Subject to your questions, that completes my presentation.
Great, thanks, Mr. Borg. Ton of information here. So the way I'd like to handle this this evening is obviously a lot of information. We've talked about some of these things in the past, but to see it all like this, plus some things we haven't talked about. What, you know, consistent with what Mr. Borg proposed, I think, you know, the vetting, there's lots of vetting that has to happen. I'm sure you're probably all sitting on a lot of questions and connections and intersections and whatnot. I think we need to do that in subcommittee. What I'd like to do this evening is go through each counselor, give each of you a chance to just comment, provide feedback. What Mr. Borg and I had agreed is that at our January 11th meeting, we'll come back with specific referral requests from Mr. Borg. So this idea, I would request that the council refer it to economic development. This package, I'd request that it be referred to by law, whatever, right? We'll break them up and have a little bit more of a structured plan so that all of us can understand how to move this forward and how to actually go through the heavy lifting of asking the questions. I know for sure Mr. Borg has already spent a lot of time with the department heads and in some cases, the other boards that may be involved. But there's lots, lots more of that work to do too. So what I'd like to do tonight is just give each of you a chance, provide whatever reaction, feedback you may have. Mr. Borg can kind of take that under advisement as he, you know, puts together the referral proposals. And then we'll get into the real meat and potatoes of this in January and February. So I would just, you know, ask, you know, kind of do your best to control the questions. I'm sure everybody has a thousand. It's okay to ask maybe some high-level ones now, but let's try to put that work in subcommittees if we can. So if that sounds good, I'd like to just go down my list. Again, I'm going to call on everyone and not make, kind of force you to raise hands. And if it's okay with Ms. Prescott, I'm going to give Mr. Shanahan the opportunity to go second. And I'll let you go first, Ms. Prescott.
I don't think I have any questions right now. I think I'm going to wait until we get through subcommittee. Maybe follow through some other subcommittee questions that way.
Mr. Shanahan. No audio.
That was great. I mean, I think that was very comprehensive, and I look forward to.
That's amazing. So I think you got your comment, Mr. Shanahan. There was probably a 20-second delay. I've never seen that before. Heard you.
Okay, so you did hear me.
I'm going to try to figure out how to get that fixed. Ms. Boy.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Oh, it keeps going in and out. Great presentation, Mr. Borg. I just want to say, this is my first time seeing this, and I would like to look at it more. I did take notes, and I do have some questions. And Keith, I was wondering, is it possible that we could have discussion on it again at our January 11th meeting?
Yeah, let me look at it. I want to kind of balance the work of the subcommittees with the work of the whole. But, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for some questions and feedback that we can do in kind of a general session as we're doing the referrals. So let's talk Ms. Boyce a little bit more. And Mr. Borg, we could talk about how best to sort of balance the benefits of talking as a full council versus the balance of the subcommittees. The other thing I would remind everyone too is just because you're not on a subcommittee doesn't mean that you can't attend subcommittees, right? You can, and you can ask questions, you just can't be part of deliberations. Anything else, Ms. Boyce?
Oh, no, I, no.
Okay, great. You and I can circle back later once we get into January, as we're planning for the 11th. Mr. Gregory.
Um, I guess, wow. I mean, you know, when I was, when I reviewed this prior to today's meeting, I had a chance to kind of, you know, just review it. And I had questions, but at this point, it's more so just, you know, a thank you to Mr. Borg. I think about the leadership that we were seeking when we went out to look for a town manager. And, you know, this is exactly a testament to that. We wanted somebody that could come in, kind of understand how can he advance the whole departments as a whole? How can he get more for the town? And I think this is a step in the right direction. I got to tell you, when we went through the presentation, I got goosebumps. And it's not because my house is cold, you know, my wife actually, you know, she cranks the heat. But what I see here is I see an opportunity to find additional talent to really take us further in the upcoming years. So I'm excited about it. And in particular, Office of Community Development, I have seen that work. I have seen that flourish in other communities. So I'm particularly intrigued about that. And, you know, you have my unwavering support. Everybody knows where I stand with this. We will vet it. My only thing that I will say to my fellow counselors is, I know when you start seeing a lot of change and, you know, you start to worry about what it's going to cost the town, and you talk about money. I will say with the Office of Community Development, that's one office where whatever it is for this additional talent or this additional position is a drop in the bucket if we get the right individual to kind of bring in and channel that new growth. So if we could just think, you know, big picture and not be closed-minded over what the dollar amounts are, we could find a way. And it sounds like he's trying to go in a direction where it's a zero-sum game. Game, a game or game? Game.
Game.
Thank you. Zero-sum, zero-sum game. So if that's the case, great. But if that's not the case, let's not shut the door because we're worried about, you know, whatever the additional salary may be. So that's my part, my piece. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Simmons.
Thank you. I would actually just like to echo Counselor Gregory. I am on board with anything which can move our town forward, help consolidate functions, and help and help deliver services to citizens. I think this is one of the reasons we hired Mr. Borg. He does have my support in this, and I will hold the further comments until we get into the weeds at the subcommittee meetings.
Great, thanks, Mr. Simmons. Ms. Cathcart.
Hi. It's an amazing presentation. I'm incredibly impressed. I will admit, I feel like I just joined the military. And I say that with a kind heart and a kind word. But I'm like, well, we may need to change our position to general town manager. But that being said, the oldest person on this council, but, you know, my life is here, my roots are here, and I'm so happy to see that we're going in the right direction. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Ms. Cathcart. Mr. Lennox.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'm just going to echo some of the comments made previously. A presentation that can lead to a lot of future impact, positive impact, happy to see. I do have a group of questions. I'll share a few of them only because there's a few of us on this council that have actually lived some of this stuff for quite a while. That includes you, Ms. Cathcart. I know that you've dealt with so much of this stuff for so long. But, you know, a group of us spent a lot of time trying to see how we could make some of these things happen. Ultimately, it led us to where we are today. And getting a presentation like this is the kind of thing that continue to drive our success going forward. So really happy to see it. I would absolutely agree. Only a military officer would write a outline in a presentation to the point and succinct and right down to the, right down to it. So I really appreciate that. If I could just quickly share a few concerns, questions, real quick. I don't have to have an answer right now. If there's something you want to volunteer, fine. If it wants to come out in subcommittee, I'm totally fine with that. Just in regards to the pond and beach administration, is that something that the YMCA will continue to participate in? I know they helped do a lot of certification work for our lifeguards previously. And that was kind of a win-win situation there because that's what they do. One of the things that they do very well. And we were the beneficiaries of some of that work. So, you know, I'm just curious about that going forward. Going forward, Lenore's Pantry. I was totally on board with the thought of making this move for quite a while. It's been kicked around a little bit ever since Allen Ave was returned to the town. Will individuals actually be going there to get food from the pantry? Or is it delivery or how that all works? My concern is that Lenore's Pantry sits right in the center of town, right this second. Somebody that needs, like, right in the local area can go right into the center of town or lives right in the center of town and can get there very easily. Whereas Allen Ave is kind of more pushed out away from the center. Does that limit anyone's accessibility to getting the food that they need from the pantry? That's where I'll go from there. Otherwise, if that facility is acceptable for that, I'm totally on board for that. That would be great. If I could just move to the solid ways, I'm sorry to take up time here with some of these things, but I just want to get some of these thoughts. So regarding the laws on using enterprise equipment co-mingling. If we consolidate these departments, are these enterprises really allowed to co-mingle equipment like we'd like them to? I know that it's been a discussion point in the past. I'll let you kick that around. And then it's just my assumption here that one, there'd need to be a bylaw change because currently it's, I think it's still Board of Selectment, and I know that was being changed to manager. But then if it were to be under the control of DBW, that would probably have to be the bylaw change right there, which would include, I would assume, approval from the Department, the Board of Public Works. That's just my assumption on that. And you can totally jump in and tell me if I'm wrong. In regards to the one that I was really interested in, Office of Community Development, I'm in, like, sounds great. Totally open-minded about it. The positive, one of the things that you hit on, Mr. Borg, was the quicker efficiency in permitting. I've heard this from business owners, from folks that work in real estate in the area, not just in this town, in this area. It was, if you asked them what they wanted from any town, it was efficient, quicker permitting. It allows them to do their job just as well. So if that is something that gets, evolves here, that'd be fantastic. I am definitely going to need to know the cost. Like, everything, I totally open-minded. Just going to need to know the cost. And as much of that as you can, we can provide. Totally open-minded about going forward with that. And then finally, on the facilities director, can we please, I heard you personally say that you were going to work with the superintendent on this. Can we just really please strive towards one director here instead of sharing it between the town and the schools? Like, you'll hear that forever. Why do we have to have two? Why do we have to have two of this? Why, like, the, and if there's a reason for it, there's a reason for it. But let's make sure that it's a really great, efficient operation. I'm totally on board for that. We've got to protect our assets. We've got to know what needs maintenance. That's the only way that we can plan well going forward to take care of ourselves. So finally, thank you for the indulgence of the time. Awesome job. Keep it going. I'm so excited to see this go more. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mr. Lennox. Mr. Pari.
All right, thank you very much. Very good presentation, Mr. Borg. Thank you. I think very ambitious, very, very ambitious, to say the least. And I think that's, I think that's good. I mean, you know, the town passed a new charter, right? With the objective of trying to push through a lot of these things and to have these conversations. So get them all on the table, right? And I think that's, I think that's a good thing. And I'm looking forward to having these conversations. I think the, you know, eliminating redundancies and creating resource pools, right? Good, good, right? Looking to reduce or balance costs, good. You know, all good stuff. Obviously, the thing that, just looking at the structure, right? I mean, I like the idea of creating the offices. I think it makes sense from a management perspective of the town's departments. But what concerns me is just sort of when I see a new level of hierarchy being created. And I think I heard three, four, five potentially, I'll say like, new executive positions being proposed. Uh, you know, one, one executive position may equal in cost to two or three lower level employees, right? So, um, I kind of, I kind of worry about a top heavy piece. And I know, I know there's a whole lot of conversations we all need to have in terms of cost efficiencies and things, other changes that are gonna have. Um, but that's just my gut reaction when I see that. Um, that's that's a cause for concern for me and I think we really need to dig into those numbers and make sure that it's gonna be balanced off. Um, I also think, you know, potentially, as you're looking at some of those, some of those positions, right, like, maybe there's an opportunity to promote promote from within. Um, right, where we can elevate people that are currently on the staff and maybe not backfill their position or backfill their position with a significantly lower level position. Um, because again, if we are adding this extra layer, I don't want to say extra layer, forgive me if it, I'm not trying to be overly negative, but uh, we are adding like another another layer of management with this. It is what it is, um, based on the proposal. And uh, there's gonna be costs and I think that's good, that's gonna be my number one concern really about this whole thing is, can we afford it? Um, right? And are those economic efficiencies and operational efficiencies that we make, um, gonna be gonna be affordable, right? Because we have a limited budget. We're restrained by proposition two and a half. We have escalating costs every year as it is. Like, look at the schools. We already have a deficit of some of some amount. I won't say the number. Um, but uh, there's, there's, so, so that those are my, those are my biggest concerns. Um, I think as, I think Mr. Lennox made a great point on the facilities director, by the way. Uh, the, if that could end up being a joint proposal from you, Mr. Borg and Mr. Holcomb, um, I don't know if that's realistic, but uh, some way to sort of have that proposal around the facilities director come from both you guys, that would be, that would be amazing. Um, I think it'd be a good way to kind of potentially consider doing that. Um, from a, oh, before I start, one other thing, um, with the assessor's office, uh, something that kind of, a question that occurred to me was I heard, um, because I kind of have this assumption in business, right, where it's generally, not always, generally cheaper to outsource, um, you know, functions, right? It's generally cheaper to go outside. You don't get to take on the the loaded costs, right, and the burden of of benefits and, um, you know, you know, all that sort, all that sort of stuff, the salaries. You're not committed to it for years, right? You don't have these union positions. Um, so if if that, if we're end up bringing on, you know, additional resources onto the assessors to do a lot of those assessments, you know, in-house, I think those are yours, you do them in-house. I'm just surprised that that's, I'm surprised to hear that that's, you know, more cost effective than than outsourcing. Um, and for me, that was just something I'd like to hear more about, obviously during those presentations. Um, and I think finally, the, as committee members, I think, I think we we have a big responsibility here, guys, as as the council members, right? This is an ambitious timeline. There's a lot of work. Um, right? And as a financing member, right, we're, we're already gonna be doing the budget present, the budget. That's, we're busy enough with that. You guys know how that is. That, that's hard work. Um, right? And now there's, there's these extra elements that are being added to it. And there's interplay between the different departments. It's not just finance committee, right? There's bylaw, economic development, whatever it might be. There's gonna be a whole lot of um things before us and the other, the other boards are gonna be dependent upon us, I think, to kind of vet these things in a timely manner. Um, so I just want to, I want us, you know, Mr. Borg. From my perspective, I'm I'm committed to making sure we have those meetings, right? Um, and that we we vet these things as soon as possible. Can you guys hear me now? Sorry, you lost me there.
Yeah, yeah, you're okay now. You you, we lost you for 10 seconds maybe in the middle. I think we got the gist of it though, just in terms of time commitment and uh the fact that everybody's gonna have.
Okay. Yeah, so so that that's it, right? We just need to, we need to make sure that we're, we're committed as counselors and committee members to to vet these things. Um, let's not let schedules get in the way. We're gonna have meetings with like, you know, two thirds of us present. You know, we're gonna have a quorum, but we gotta, we gotta stay on schedule. So that's, that's my, that's my other piece. Thank you, Mr. Point.
Yeah, good. Thanks, Mr. Pari. Um, I'll just offer a couple reactions. I don't want to uh rehash uh a lot of what was said. I will just quickly, from a uh move forward perspective, like just, it is super ambitious, but really exciting. We've been talking about uh some of these things for a long time. And uh, I mean, you could argue that the the whole reason the charter came to be was because of this community desire for increased intero- interoperations among what historically had been siloed departments. So this is like the next big step forward. So really excited about it. And I know how much work goes into this, sort of development work. Um, and then you couple in the fact that, uh, you know, you don't have sole decision-making authority, right? You've got all all you've got the bargaining units, you've got other boards, you've got the town council. Uh, so coming up with this and trying to find the right balance is incredibly hard to do. Um, I do, you know, just, I I guess food for thought as you go to the next level, I think it's kind of more clarity on the ultimate org structure, like what's the difference between an organization and a person? Um, you know, kind of some of the things that Mr. Pari and Mr. Lennox were saying, um, you know, I I, you know, adding a whole bunch of senior level positions. I don't think that's what you mean. Actually, I kind of look at this and I think first of all, some of these positions already exist. Some are probably the idea of team leader within a, within a group. So, um, but I think some real clarity there because, you know, if you just looked at it at face value and you didn't have the narrative to go with it, it looks like six new executive positions. And and I know that that's not what you mean. Um, so I I think as we come into the next cycle, getting clarity there will be good. Um, again, I couldn't stress enough, and I know you're already doing it, but the collaboration with the affected boards, units, et cetera. You know, we've seen a couple of these attempts in the past come unraveled because of a lack of communication. So I think still, you know, you've got to make the decision. You're the chief executive of the town and we've got certain approval rights. Um, so you want consensus, but what's different now with the charters, you don't have to die on consensus, right? I do think we've got, you've got the authority with with our blessing, I think, some of these things to drive some of these things through. And I think that's great. But you still want to do it with an informed perspective. And I think, well, I know that's your style, so, um, I feel good about that. Otherwise, I'll hold other detailed comments and questions. Mr. Borg, just a process question. Would it be helpful? I'm just, you know, I know myself, I'm sure others, other counselors, they're like, you know, a laundry list of specific questions. I know Mr. Lennox himself asked some things which I I think were less like, hey, I want this answer and more of make sure you think about this as you're putting it together. Um, would it be helpful? Uh, I don't want to like overwhelm you and get a bunch of redundant, but i- as we think of things over the coming weeks, um, is it okay if the council sends you a note, maybe with a copy to me, just so I s- see the traffic? Um, is that acceptable to you to, if?
Absolutely. Now, Council President, no issues whatsoever. As a matter of fact, I I would encourage that and and I could, you know, uh, work all of these and weave them into, you know, the follow-up presentation as we go forward and uh and then put forward in the uh referrals to the different committees.
Yeah, I think I think that's great. I know that's exactly what I was thinking is if you have that input, it might even help you shape things as they go in. Uh, Ms. Kathcart, question?
Yes, um, could Mr. Borg uh email the presentation to us?
Yeah, yeah, he did. He should have it, but.
Yeah.
I tried it several times.
He tried to send me. I'm sorry. I didn't get it.
I don't have that information either.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get the email stuff fixed in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Borg, maybe just a suggestion. Could we take everything that was wrapped up in this meeting? Maybe just look at all the emails that went out over the last five or six days? Can we just put them all together in one package and email it all out? So, um, because I I know with the confusion, there's been redundant emails and, you know, multiple emails. I don't know if if that's a fair, fair request.
A- absolutely. For the sake of clarity, uh, Council President, we'll we'll do that to kind of put a bow in this one and uh wrap it up.
Good, thank you. Okay, so just from a direction standpoint, then, I I'd ask all the counselors, as you're thinking about this, go ahead and, you know, batch up your questions or feedback even, send it directly to Mr. Borg with a count, a copy to me. So again, so I can just see the activity going on. Um, and I think that can be anything from, you know, questions, points to consider, reaction, feedback. I know we're all out in the community too. So if you're hearing things and you want to share to, you know, share the perspective, I, I'm sure that'll help. And then, uh, what Mr. Borg and I will do and with Mr. Pari's help, we'll, we'll work the agenda for the January 11th meeting and come back with a series of recommended referrals and try to structure this a little bit more and kind of lay that timeline out, you know, to Mr. Pari's point. You know, thi- this is our busy season, right? This, the next six months, I guess our whole year's a busy season, but, you know, this whole budget cycle is is heavy. Finance Subcommittee, no doubt. Hopefully, some of this work for finance is redundant, like you'd have to do it either as the budget or as part of the bylaw. So hopefully, there's some synergy, maybe, trying to look at the glass half full. Um, but anyways, for the 11th, Mr. Borg and I, I'll put our heads put a little bit of a plan there together. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay, Mr. Pari, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Point. Uh, will this, maybe it already is. Um, i- is this gonna be posted to the town website, this presentation? I know, um.
Council President through you, yes, it will be.
Yeah. Actually, I've noticed, Mr. Borg does a, in the office, does a really good job after our meetings of taking the related documents and making sure they're all there. So I appreciate that, Mr. Borg, and this will be an important one. Okay, so with that, uh, let me go back to the agenda. Uh, we'll move on from this topic today. Um, okay, we're we're getting close to wrapping up here, but before uh we talk about executive session, I just did want to talk about our meeting schedule. Uh, we had a, we have our kind of regular cadence meeting scheduled for December 28th. Uh, that was a meeting uh that, this last summer, when we were laying out our schedule for the year, we talked about as being a potential cancel meeting because of the holiday week. Uh, I've talked to Mr. Borg and at the moment, it looks like there's nothing that has to happen on that date. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna cancel the 28th meeting. But what I will do is just ask all of you to, you know, kind of keep that on your calendar, try to preserve that time, because if something does come up in the next 10 days that requires our action on, um, I I won't call a long meeting by any means, but I would just ask you to hold that time in case there's something last minute that we need to take action on. You know, I don't, I don't want to hold, hold town business up. So we'll cancel it, but keep it on your calendar just in case. Uh, then our next two meetings are important meetings. January 4th is the joint meeting with the school committee. Uh, Mr. Borg, I have personally talked to the school committee about that, and I know you've talked to the superintendent, but if we could just remind them and ask the superintendent to remind his committee about that. Again, the purpose of that meeting is the current state of the town. A forward look at what revenues we're expecting. It's a really hard meeting for the manager to orchestrate because we don't, we don't very little. We don't know the state information yet. We don't have a lot of trending. But it's essentially an opportunity for the town manager's office to give us and the school committee a view of the state of the town, how spending's going. Budget's so late that we're kind of in the thick of it, but the charter requires this meeting. Um, and it's an opportunity, quite frankly, for the school committee and the town council at the exact same time to be hearing the state of the town. So, for example, if we were heading into Rocky Water, everybody should know that because as you're planning your budget, as you're planning departmental budgets, you should know. If we've got some reasons for optimism, people should know that. And uh, that's the purpose of that meeting. Uh, and we'll do that on the 4th. Uh, uh, I'm sure we're gonna be remote, so we don't have to worry about physical location, but I'm sure we'll be remote at that point in time. Um, and then the 11th is our next regular meeting. Uh, just tonight, we've put into uh two important topics already on that agenda. Uh, we stuffed the work in Mr. Gregory's uh uh request on economic development as well. So we'll meet the 11th and then we'll meet two weeks after that, whatever that date is. Um, so that's our schedule here going forward. Um, and before we, once we head into this executive session, uh, reading here, we're gonna wrap up pretty quickly. So I'll just say, um, happy holidays to everybody. I hope everyone's safe. Uh, this COVID status is is serious. Um, and I just hope everybody does what they need to do to protect themselves and and stay healthy and uh enjoy the peace of the season. I hope that for all of you and I hope that for anybody who's watching, um, as Mr. Sweet demonstrates the appropriate way to wear a mask. So, um, thanks, everybody. Uh, Mr. Pari, I'll take a motion enter into executive session, please.
I moved enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7 to review, deliberate and take any other action appropriate regarding executive session minutes for October 26, 2020.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Pari and a second from Mr. Lennox. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Shanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Shanahan votes yes. Ms. Prescott.
Problem.
Yes. Awesome. Actually, I didn't even notice that, but that was spot on. Uh, so a yes for Mr. Shanahan and a yes for Ms. Prescott, Ms. Voice.
Yes.
Ms. Voice votes yes. Mr. Gregory.
Yes.
Mr. Gregory votes yes. Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Simmons votes yes. Ms. Kathcart.
Yes.
Ms. Kathcart votes yes. Mr. Lennox.
Yes.
Mr. Lennox votes yes. Mr. Pari.
Yes.
Mr. Pari votes yes. I keep the point vote yes. That's nine zero. The town council is now entering into exec- executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7. Uh, to, uh, for the purpose previously voted as discussion and open session would have a detrimental mental effect on the previous reviewed topics. Uh, the town council would not be returning to open session and will adjourn directly from executive session. Uh, it is 9:25. We're into executive session. Uh, Council, you can stay on this line. We'll clear everybody else out of it. So thank you, everyone. Good night.